The regular regular city council meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM June 6th will now come to order. Rule call.
Council Rousey.
Here.
Council Coivinon.
Here.
Council Purpich.
Here.
Council Lillis.
Here.
Mayor Vice Sullivan.
Here.
Item C, approval of minutes. Minutes of city council meeting May 2nd, minutes of city council special meeting May 18th, and minutes of city council workshop meeting May 18th. No one has any questions or changes. I'll call for motion and we approve these minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey. We have a support.
Support.
Worked by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D, approval of agenda. Do we have any changes, additions, or deletions on the agenda tonight?
I don't.
Well then I'll call for motion that we approve the agenda as it is printed.
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, support by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have no appointments or presentations. Consent agenda. Approval of payroll, April 16th through the 30th. Approval of payroll, May 1st through the 15th. Approval of payroll, May 16th through the 31st, and approval of claims, May 2023. Anybody have any questions on any of those? I'll call for motion and we approve items 1 through 4.
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, we got a support.
Support.
Support by Rousey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 5, authorize wastewater operator to attend wastewater treatment annual conference, July 27th through the 29th in Grand Rapids. They get, they have to go to that every year, I think, don't they, Jerry?
Yeah, then our main operator goes up there every year.
Isn't there, isn't there a requirement for his license?
Yeah.
He has to have so many.
Yeah, you have to have so many class planes flown.
That's what I, that's what I was thinking.
It's budgeted too, isn't it?
It's what?
Budgeted.
Um, yeah, it's, it seems, yeah, it doesn't cost much.
Yeah, no.
Well, I like the training because then they're in with the other operators, you know, and everybody runs into it. Not a textbook circumstance. You get a lot of pointers and tips there. Well, call for motion. Have we authorized this conference?
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Authorize Sergeant Illyas and K-9 Bear to attend United States Police K-9 Association regional trials in Chisago, Minnesota. Call for motion. Have we approved this?
So moved.
Support.
Who made the motion? You, Brian?
Yep.
Motion made by Lillis, support by Coivinon. You got anything to add, Chief?
Well, this is their yearly training they go to.
How old is Bear?
Five.
Five?
Gotta be about five.
Or abouts. Yeah.
He only goes for so many more years, doesn't he? Nine years and then they're out.
That's why I was asking.
We have to get a bear too.
There you go.
Not like that first dog. Old Alan was mean.
I think that's probably what we need now.
Well, you never know. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have no public hearings, no unfinished business. Under new business, home occupation permit application for Brita Potter of Iron Range Paddle LLC. And that is gonna be a rental, looks like?
Yes, um, Tony wasn't able to be here, but he told me there was not a lot of discussion, no drama around the items. I did go to her website today where you can go online and make the reservation and then she emails you and confirms it and then tells you the code to open up wherever she's got it to pick it up, so.
Oh, does she have them at different places?
Well, it talks about possibly delivering, but she's also wants to, wants people to be able to go to her home and come up.
You know, the, the only problem with that is it's right on fail road and it's right up on the top of the hill. You know, as you come up the hill, right, it's the brick, brick home on the right-hand side. That's what we discussed, right, Jer?
Yes.
905?
Yep.
And, you know, she does have it, it's all fenced in, but that was done by the previous owner, I think, because of the kids that she had. And you can't, if you're gonna be in the garage, where's the, where's the traffic gonna?
Pick it up, give you the load?
Garage is on the alley side, am I right?
What's that?
Garage is on the alley.
Garage is on the alley side.
Right. I'm guessing that, I'm guessing people will come up, they'll roll down to the alley, but I'm unclear. I apologize for my ignorance.
And her neighbor, they're all.
And her neighbors don't have a problem with this?
They didn't, no, no, nobody came to the meeting, nobody, nobody even signed the sheet, according to what this said.
Great.
So, other than, other than a traffic hazard where you're parking on fail road, which is generally pretty busy.
Well, you can park right in front of the place.
Yeah, in front of the house, yeah.
On Auburn.
Yeah.
Auburn would be a really safe place to do it. And then we're talking, it looks like she's only got three paddle boards.
Oh, wow, that I don't think it's gonna be that.
Shouldn't be that heavy congestion and I appreciate the due diligence that our zoning administrator.
I thought that was pretty, pretty thorough.
And our planning commission, uh, once again have, have done a very stellar job in, uh, holding the appropriate, uh, due process and
Yep.
Um, like to thank them for their time and efforts in that respect.
Any further discussion? Call for motion. Have we approved this permit?
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Worked by Rousey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 2, change order number 2 for 2023 failed pond trail improvements in the amount of $7,000.
What is the reason for this change order?
We, we discussed that.
We want wider?
Widening the trail and that's why this is a change order.
Well, then I will come unglued.
Just hoping for a little entertainment.
Me too, that's what I was thinking, John.
Well, I mean, we just started this, so I'm bringing, how in the hell can we have a change order? But then I remember we did go wider, so.
Yeah.
And the price of this stuff isn't cheap, so I guess I'll just be quiet.
I'll swallow it seven grand.
I'll swallow my pride.
We all know that money.
Yeah.
The, the price of everything is outrageous.
That's right.
But on the upside is.
I go by there almost every day and there's a lot of traffic down there and it will be used, so this is good money spent. That is really taxpayer dollars.
That's taxpayer dollars spent.
More, more people are gonna be using it because it's new and it's, it's nice and it's. People, maybe some people didn't go down there because they, you know, rough ground, water, all that kind of stuff. I think it's great.
Any further discussion or call for a motion? Uh, we approve this change order?
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, we have a support.
I'll support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 3, pay request number 1 for 2023 failed pond trail improvements from Masabi Batumnas. Amount of $19,863.55. Have a motion. Have we approved this pay request?
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support.
Support.
You support that, Joel?
Yes, I did.
Support by Coivinon. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number 4, cost estimate for pre-demolition asbestos inspection and hazardous material survey for 408 Fail Road Evelyn. That is the old Blackwoods billing. And when can I start? As soon as we give the go-ahead?
Yes.
If no one has any questions or?
I think it's, I think it's long overdue. Let's get this done, boys.
Yeah.
Well, then let's call for a motion. Uh, do we approve this cost estimate for this pre-demolition?
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Worked by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number 5, resolution authorizing conveyance of real estate and purchase agreement between the City of Evelyn, Northern Pines Construction, for Carter Circle Lot Number 5.
That's where you live, Bob?
Yeah, do, do they know that there is only a, there's a covenant for only one dog up there?
I told him only one dog.
There's only one dog that's in charge. They could have a picture of their dog on a mantle, but that's it.
Well, considering the price of some of these developments, the lots, like $25,000, did you see that, some of them? Well, it's nice to see some action anyway, up there. I'll call for a motion to approve this resolution, conveying lot number 5.
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, we have a support.
Support.
Worked by Rousey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number 6, resolution authorizing conveyance of real estate and purchase agreement between the City of Evelyn and Northern Pines Construction for Carter Circle Lot 6. Same conditions. We have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Coivinon, support by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Well, the nice thing with those lots, they have the Ellie access.
Oh, they're on that back side.
Yeah, they're on that back side. So, you know, if you ever wanted anything in the back, you got the Ellie right there.
Well, it's kinda nice.
It is. It's a nice situation there.
Just have to get the other people's property off of it.
Well, I think, uh.
Jackie's working on it?
I had it from the school.
Yeah. Item number 7. Letter from Commercial Refrigeration dated June 1st, 2023. Jerry, do you wanna give us any more details?
Yeah, we have, uh, commercial refriger come down. We, uh, we turned on the ice plant because we wanted to check the temperature, um, on the floor. And what, what was happening was the, the boards, the dashboards moved a little bit. So in some spots, it was a little warmer on, on, especially in the corners. So they just, the boards need to be realigned and brought in just a little bit. Uh, it ain't much, but it will take care of any, any problems we had, um, with, with the ice surface in the corners. And this is a budgetary number. Um, Ring Systems gave us a bunch of daily number to, to get them realigned because it's mainly labor that they're gonna have to, have to do. So we won't know the true number. It could be less, be a little bit more than that.
Change order.
But it won't be a change order because 10,000 is just a budgetary number.
How soon can they start on that?
Uh, I'll call them as soon as you guys give me the okay and then we'll talk to them.
Well, this will be nice to have done so you can put everything to bed that's been said about this corner and everything, so.
Yeah, and it, it wasn't, it wasn't terribly bad, but there was a little bit of a difference in, in, uh, how cold it was here to how cold it was here, so. But everywhere else, uh, Mark Rodrigo went through the whole plant and we had it on and he said, everything is firing 100%. He said, everything looks good.
And that's good to hear.
Yep, we don't have to do anything major, that's for sure. I mean, maybe we can use a newer compressor someday, but.
Oh, you'll bring that up to us.
Everything's looking good.
You'll bring that up to us.
Yeah, no, he said, oh, Brian, oh, Brian, consistently. Everything's really good.
Good.
Besides, besides the boards just being realigned a little bit, maybe a half inch.
Funny thing, there was nothing wrong with the ice when the Miners Memorial Building was there, all of a sudden.
Really? I don't know.
Yeah, there, there was nothing major wrong with our ice.
No, it's funny how three miles can make a difference.
Oh, yeah. Well, I suppose we're further south, you know what I mean?
Remember, it's a good thing around a hill. I can't say the rest of it.
Any other questions from Jerry? Call for a motion. Uh, we approve this, uh, amount to do the work?
So moved.
I'll second you.
Motion made by Coivinon, supported by Rousey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number 8, Hippodrome Arena. Well, as you know, we've been dealing with this ice time issue and I guess, uh, Joel is, you got everybody calling, denying they call, there's, I mean, the hired help, I mean, the school board should be the ones looking for a request. Wouldn't you think formally?
Correct.
Because we deal with them because they are the body who makes the approval. And, uh, I don't know everybody's else thoughts. I would like to notify the school board. We'd like to go through a normal bidding process. You've got everybody from, I don't know what they're doing over there. A coach, you got the frickin' English teacher, anybody else calling about ice time and, and then everybody denies, like the first year. Calling Jerry on the phone, and he denied calling him. So I think we need to be formal because there's.
I think we better put it into writing because the last school board meeting I went to, it has to be in writing or isn't true.
Well, that's what I'd like to have, uh, Joel send a letter.
I think you could put it in writing perfectly, Joel.
We would like to go by, how you wanna word it, Joel, approve the request for quotes and.
Yeah, you can do that. You, you can also follow up any of those home conversations Jerry has with a confirming email and copy a couple people. So everyone knows what was said in the conversation and, uh, and you have some, some proof on the back end. I can do whatever the council would like.
Well, I, I would like to formally let them know so the school board knows this is what we'd like to see. Because it seems like all the calls, some of them don't know what's going on because probably not everybody's included in the process, but it looks like. It's just, it's gotten to be a joke is what it's gotten to be.
Well, it, it got to be that there was, you know, 75 athletes between the two buildings using, utilizing this. But that's 75 families out of the total area that, you know, I don't know how many households we have between Virginia Evelyn and Gilbert. But it seems to me that we should not have to, um, they, I know they said 50%, and we want that 50%.
That's right.
And 75, uh, students are making the decision for a whole bunch of other people. And some of those guys, those seniors, the juniors, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be.
Two years from now, they won't even think about.
They won't even think about it.
And the damage is done, you know?
And we're, we're sitting without anything to fill the hip and I, I think that's terribly wrong, um.
And I think that the public should probably be aware that operating in the fashion that they have chosen to operate is costing the taxpayers of this district thousands and thousands of dollars every year.
And that's what they have to realize is.
We're the low bidder and remarkably lower than the.
They don't have the money to finish the dugouts up there and we would be saving them thousands and thousands of dollars. I don't understand and they say it's not about the tax, no, it is about the taxpayers.
Yeah.
Yes, it's 75 families there that are playing hockey is fine, but you, your butt would not be there without these taxpayers. And that's a chap to realize. You gotta get rid of your heart and, and do a little business sense here.
Well, everybody knows what was said when that merger came.
Oh, you bet.
They said it's not in writing. That's what I wanted, uh, Joel to send them a letter. We want things in writing and done in a proper way.
We had Noel Schmidt right there, 50/50.
Yep.
Standing right there. Noel's pretty good because if he's not asked it, he's not gonna say it. You know, he's been around for a long time, but to, to go to a meeting like we did, and I watched this gentleman and his son, which he was not treating, teaching his son anything good, standing up saying, it's not in writing, so we don't have to, I mean, we're not grade school kids. Let's get that out of the way. Everybody's standing and there's a taxpayer. If your little Johnny wants to play, that's fine, if he can make the team. Because all these kids don't make the team. I think Evelyn had 12 people last night or the last year tryout and only three made it. So, a lot of the people, their, their kids aren't even gonna make the teams. You know, it's just sorry because it is about the taxpaying dollars. And unless you realize that, you know, it's, it's wrong. And if we could save you $50,000, hmm, let's do the math.
And that amount of money isn't gonna solve the problem that they're trying to solve.
No.
It's not even close to doing any good, but just causing animosity between the communities. And that, that's, that's kinda, uh, where I'm at on that. If, uh, somebody has any objections, have Joel send them a letter for that effect.
Yeah, maybe I can work with Jerry on that and the coverage that would be appropriate from the city's perspective.
Mayor, do you think it'd be okay if once the letter's directed that maybe just two of you take a look at it? To make sure it delivers the message that we intend? I think there might be some value in that. I'm looking at Jim, maybe, and one, somebody else.
Jim and somebody else, because I don't see this with the clean head because I, I just, I get really mad about it when I
That'd be nice for you to see.
Look at everything all the way around is, because then you're saving somebody $100,000. I mean, come on.
I can do that. I think there's, well, I mean, there's standard guidelines from municipalities to operate within for the bidding process. And I don't know why that's being circumvented.
Yeah, I, I don't either. It's just.
And I want the public to know it, not just the people sitting in that room fighting for it or not, but the public, if they know that, how much that they're, you know, just, I'm just pissing away. That's what they're doing with it and it's wrong.
I, I also want the public to know that it is all about the kids.
Yes.
You know, we've heard that 100 times. We don't want anybody to believe that the five of us up here think anything less of that thought. It is all about.
Yes, it is.
And, and we advocate for the best possible environment, but with that said, you know, we, we have a situation where, um, you know, and I have to say it point blank, that, you know, Evelyn's getting shorted.
Yeah.
We're getting shorted on an agreement that was struck before this became a reality. And, uh, it, it leaves a bitter taste in one's mouth. I know it does mine anyway.
Yeah, to put it, to put it in layman's terms, I don't like getting lied to and denying when everybody heard this. Public, it was announced publicly how many times?
Yep.
There'll be no more handshake word of, this is my word, handshake agreements.
They wanted in writing, Joel, you take care of the writing.
Has to be.
Yeah. And that'll involve any interaction.
Yes.
Not just this.
No, good enough.
Yeah, since it's obvious, uh, that doesn't work anymore.
Well, you can't believe them.
No. Anybody else have any other questions and can move, move on? Joel, you have any other questions for us?
No, I'll, I'll follow up with Brian and Jerry.
Wondered if you wanted to make a motion.
Okay, make a motion that we authorize the city attorney to send a letter?
Thank you.
So moved.
I'll second you.
Who made the first one?
Eden.
Joel. Motion made by Coivinon, support by Rousey. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number 9, access agreement between United Taconite and the City of Evelyn for 4th of July fireworks.
Oh, boy.
Things are heating up, getting ready.
Do we have to prove that every year? I thought we had one.
Yeah, I'm working with, um, John Mark, you know, making sure that the permit gets signed and.
And the insurance they have to see now.
Everything's good.
Okay, a call for a motion that we approve this access agreement?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Request from 4th of July Committee for donation to support 4th of July event, $5,000.
That's what we've been doing every year, so.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that week.
Do you have a support?
Support.
Support by, motion made by Coivinon, support by Purpich to give donation for 4th of July events. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And number 11, we just will announce the grand marshal for the parade.
Well, there's, they're two very community-oriented people. Uh, this is well, I think it's well deserved. They do a lot, um, with a lot of organizations and helping us here at, at the city, you know, the origin. So I, I, I'm really, uh, happy that, uh, they accepted and I think it's a, it's a great honor for us to give them, uh, low recognition.
Stancy and George Walters, old time residents of the community. You say they're pretty active in everything that goes on in the community.
Yeah.
It's good, real good recognition. I'm glad.
And my congratulations to both George and Stancy and thank you for all of your public service over the years.
They're, they're still stepping up every time something goes out.
Lots of stuff.
Memorandum of Understanding 12, memorandum of understanding with ASME Council 65 to add Juneteenth to the paid holiday schedule.
What exactly is Juneteenth?
Another day drug gets off.
You know what I mean? Whoa.
It's a celebration of the date that the last enslaved slaves realized that the emancipation proclamation had gone forward and that they were freed.
You gotta, I mean, is this for real?
It's a federal holiday.
When I read this, I didn't believe it and, and I just, wow.
I don't know.
I had a question, Mayor. Now, I see we're, we've struck a memorandum of understanding with ASME. How about our other employees?
Well, so we are obligated by, you know, Minnesota law and the federal law to give the employees this holiday. And I consulted with our personnel attorney Mitch Brumfield and absent this, he says, we'll just write that in when we do negotiations.
So.
But they'll get the.
I'm kinda confused. Oh, okay, that's the question.
Are we gonna ever have like a July 10th and a November 10th and a December 10th?
If you would like.
I mean, is this just gonna step, step forward and keep on cruising?
Well, you know what I mean? They should have a, uh, taxpayers' day because all the money they're throwing around, they wouldn't have it if it wasn't for the taxpayers and all the people who worked during COVID.
Yep. We gotta put something in there too that all bonding, uh, all bonding applications by Jerry have to be in before he takes a day off.
It's just, anytime I see something like this, I think of Jerry and I don't know why.
I don't know. I'll tell you. Well, do I have a motion that we support this?
Oh, so moved.
Was made by Lillis. We have a support.
Support.
Worked by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 13, reschedule July 4th regular city council meeting. If we had it the second week of July, would that be too long, Jackie, or? Maybe that'd work better?
So the fourth is a Tuesday, you know, we, if you wanna have it, then that's fine because we're just gonna go ahead like we usually do. Pay those bills that absolutely have to go out for us to get the statutory application, okay? So.
Would the 10th work better on a Monday for everybody?
Monday works.
Monday would be better for me, I know.
Yeah, me also.
Because we can always, if we have something, we have to act and we can have the special council meeting.
Are we gonna have an early one?
Yeah. What is it gonna be? 10 o'clock, 1 o'clock?
9 o'clock.
9 o'clock, whatever you guys want.
Morning's pretty good.
Oh, should go for 10 o'clock?
Morning works for me.
Oh, I think that would be great.
10 o'clock.
9 o'clock?
You want 9?
9, earlier the better.
It can be at 9.
9 o'clock?
July 10th. Okay, call for a motion that we reschedule the July 4th meeting to July 10th at 9 o'clock.
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, we have a support.
I'll support.
Worked by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number 14, resignation of Nicole Stone as an EMT. They call for a motion that we accept Nicole's resignation and send her a letter of thanks for her time on the service.
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support.
Support.
Worked by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And we have a resolution accepting a donation for the library in memory of Sally Verkus from Carol Gunderson. Call for a motion that we accept this resolution and send Carol a letter of thanks for her donation.
So moved.
Made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Worked by Rousey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That takes care of new business. Any council committee reports or presentations?
I was unable to, uh, attend the park, uh, meeting, Jerry. Do you have anything that came up?
No, nothing, nothing big. It's normal.
Okay.
Well, you're gonna cut Brian?
You gotta ask Brian first this time. Because I'm usually stealing his thunder.
And, and of course, my memory is, is not serving me real well here, but did we have the HRA meeting since the last council meeting? I, I don't recall.
Well, if we did, I know that it was very mundane.
Well, if you haven't been briefed before, we did have an HRA meeting and it's business as usual. I think, um, the annual inspection report came in.
That is correct. Ninety-eight out of a hundred, which is excellent.
Exceptional grade.
Wow.
Excellent.
And, um, they are underway with replacing the doors. They run into a little bit of a snafu with the screen doors that they, at the time of the meeting, were working on rectifying. People didn't line up or something like that, what I understand, but, um, so as the project continues, they'll have all new doors up there. So that, that was a, a fairly significant project, a pretty big chunk of change.
Doors ain't cheap.
So, you know, the progress is being made. I think management, the management of that particular facility is doing quite well, you know, definitely. We're getting our monies worth.
Oh, Dana does a great job for us.
No, I'll tell you what, it's pretty, pretty quiet up there. They're, except the contractors every morning working on the doors and some windows. Those guys are up there, they're getting them, getting them knocked out. You know, one, one thing I was thinking of, you know, everybody's talking about the blight and everything. I wonder if we could put a note in the water bills that referencing these, uh, junk cars sitting in the front yards, things like that, those aren't violation of city ordinance and some of the blight, because if you wake up one morning and your car is gone, the hook might be coming out. Just start yanking them because it's, it's getting bad. It's not in the alleys. You're just writing the front tires off. I know we got one house, it's tax forfeit. There's been an old vehicle, it's corridor house, one front tire off and off for three months. You know, drive, you know, it's ain't getting fixed. I mean, that's, it's different if somebody calls and has a problem, they're working on a car, that's one thing, but some of these are just getting terrible. Is that a big problem, they, with anybody here? You want a notice in there?
Yeah, the more public notification we can get out there, the better, you know, and water billing would be one resource, but, you know, I suppose city website would probably be another, or whatever information we can get out to the public, that would be.
And I, I think that the public and, and sending it out with the water bill is a good thing because a lot of people are coming up and asking me about the blight and I think they, we have to convey to our, our people living here in Ebleth that we are working on it and we want to get it cleaned up. Uh, it's not been an easy project, you know, it's, it's slow and we, we have a lot of legal entanglements that we have to straighten out before we can actually go forward. And, but they have to know that we, we understand what they're saying and we are gonna take action.
Does it pay to put anything in the, uh, our official paper too for them? Because, you know, we're, we've got a shortage, staff shortage with the police department, so it's pretty hard for them to devote time to that. And if we could do something like this so they're aware if something happens.
I don't think the average person realizes how long it takes to do something to a blighted property.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I, I mean, it's not like our hands are tied, but we are trying.
Due process. That's, I guess that's what we're bound by and it's one of those things. Maybe one thing, and I just mentioned it again for your consideration, there's a possibility at some point we can sit down and brainstorm, uh, perhaps dedicating, you know, a, a contract person or something that specializes in just one area of our, uh, city code and that being blight enforcement, you know, to be something that, you know, hopefully our city attorney can, uh, at some point make some comments on, as to, uh, what they would recommend and then, uh, meet with prosecuting attorney and see if he's got some ideas on what we can do to streamline the process and perhaps, uh, get some of these properties dealt with in much shorter order. You know, your point about the police department being encumbered right now with the staff is well taken because it's really difficult to run, um, full-time police, uh, agency twenty-four seven and, uh, focus on one particular area of law. It's quite difficult, you know.
You think, uh, chief, if you find somebody that could do that, like some retired law enforcement or somebody who would do that, do we have to, can he just hire somebody like a casual labor or do we have to make, take some action to authorize?
Well, so you, you hire the casuals, you know, students and adults for a particular rate, but we could whip up an independent contract agreement because I'm sure that adult person whose experience isn't gonna work for a casual rate.
Right, yeah.
But, yeah, we could whip up something, then get your approval on it.
Okay, because, yeah, just in case you might, somebody might show up or call. Because, you know, it's, opportunities to get somebody like that are, are far and few between.
We would maybe, if we found somebody, would maybe we could engage them with an understanding that pretty darn soon we'd get that agreement done and maybe have a special meeting. We have other samples of independent contract agreements. We could just modify it. We could do it. Want your name, Joel?
Yes, I do.
I hope I didn't, hope I didn't speak out of turn, chief. You know, I don't want to step on your toes here.
I appreciate everything you just said.
All right.
Well, it's like these blighted, blighted houses, somebody want to sign over to us, what do you, what do you do with them? Thirty grand to knock them down? You got a thirty-five foot lot, you know?
That's coming up.
Is that triple RB? They don't have a demo fund anymore, do they?
Yes, they do. We've got some demo money for that eleven oh four McKinley.
Oh, okay.
Well, one other thing, I guess, um, and I'm not sure of the date, but the Hockey Hall of Fame is having their, uh.
Fiftieth.
They're having a picnic party out, out there and it's, uh, last year was well attended.
Is that the seventeenth? I think there was something.
I think it's the seventeenth. But, uh, be aware that, uh, that's a, it's a Ebleth building. The Hockey Hall of Fame is, uh, uh, true to its source, the resources that made hockey around the United States and, uh, and they have a lot of new, uh, exhibits up there. Um, it's been well maintained and like I said, last year there was quite a few people up there having.
Yeah, there was.
So you're welcome to come back again and, and tour the Hockey Hall of Fame.
It is June seventeenth from eleven to three.
Thank you, Joel. Eleven to three, June seventeenth.
Free admission. I thought I'd throw that.
Free is good.
Free is good. So are the hot things.
Free is good. John, you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Joel, you got anything else?
I have nothing, but the only thing we have is golf. We haven't had that and we've had a good month. We'll let you know when the smoke clears, but it's looking a lot better than it has in years. So that's about all I got.
Jim, you got anything else?
No, thank you.
Brian?
No, sir.
Chief, do you got anything to add?
Not tonight, sir. Thank you, though.
Jerry?
I just wanted to mention, mention that, um, the re-alignment in the paving is done on the, I call it the backside of Fair Pond. If you walk across the bridge.
Oh, okay.
So that is done. Um, they have a little landscaping to do, but boy, they've come nice.
Look nice?
Yeah.
Good.
And it's realigned a little, you know, higher up. So it weaves through the trees. Benchmark did a great job realigning it and, uh.
Good.
Looks great. So hopefully you will hear about another grant, uh, for the other two trails here. I believe in July, they, they may have their meeting, I think. I'm hoping so and, and I'm hoping to get a little more money for those other two trails. So hopefully we can get those done this year too.
Well, that's, that's a good, like you say, that high traffic area there. Anything else, Jerry?
That's all I have here.
Al, you got anything?
No, Jerry's still my thunder, so. So nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
I think you'll have plenty of thunder when they start those projects, Route Fifty-three, Al.
Yes.
Be a lot going on. Jack, you got anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Steph, you got anything to bring up? Joel?
No, Mayor. I was gonna share on the trails too on Phil Pyne. Jerry's stupid.
Well, I don't have anything. And we'll adjourn the meeting on that note.